One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing is, before I go anyplace to speak, it'll be video and audio tape. And if anyone else is video and/or audio taking these letters now. What are you, video and audio?
Yes, correct.
Okay, we'll go to minutes.
Mr. Glanasky, one settlement, Mr. Chair's approve. I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from January 20, 2015, as so written.
Seconded. Motion's made and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, old business, I brought this up at the last meeting. We have a complaint pertaining to inspection stickers and door thing, or equipment that we own that shouldn't have been on the road. I think that we should pass this to the Chief of Police and ask him to do an investigation. Any problem with that? Bob?
No.
Yes?
With a written report and results, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Certainly. We are, we have, I have it right here. We'll pass it over and we'll ask the Chief to investigate that, get back to us at our next meeting, please, with a written report. To see if we can, what exactly went on and what exactly, where steps we should take from this point on. All right. I'm going, any old other old business. I'll go to comments and concerns. Does anybody wish to address the board? Family?
I have several things. One, I'd like to pay the Board a compliment. Last year, we did a series of auctions, made some good money, and I'm asking or requesting that we continue this procedure in 2015, have one to two auctions, and get to the point where there's no other properties left on the board that we own that we can't sell.
I think if I remember right, Bob, returning to you, if I remember right, we have plans to sell, the next thing I thought we had plans for were to sell property that had no houses on it. Is that still correct?
That's what we were looking at. Did also, geez, I say he, I mean Bill, the Treasurer, just to clarify that, is doing more tax title sales. Instead of selling the properties, it's on the titles to the property. It doesn't end up in an auction, in a normal type auction, it's a different setup altogether. And he's gonna get rid of that. We don't think we're gonna do a lot more auctions.
But it would generate income for the town?
Excuse me?
It would generate income for the town?
Yes. Yes, but it's a different style of auction, and it's done differently, and I think more finance company buys and they buy the titles, and then they try to collect the money off the, that's all on the property.
It's open to the public or is this private?
Everything's gonna be open to the public.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Follow-up on the bells in the tower. I contacted Verden Company, and they told me they would send the tech out here at no cost to us, take a look at the bell system, evaluate it, tell us if anything needed to be done. They wanted two potential dates, like to schedule the technician.
Should I say that again, the last part?
They said they would send the-
I understand that.
Okay. They needed two dates that you would be available, Seth, Slutman, myself, and Steve Ross, so they would get together, and he would take a look and see if we needed any repairs or any maintenance in the bells.
Could we give a call with Seth, please, Seth Blackwell, please, and ask him to come up with when he would be available, and we'll go from there?
Two dates, probably.
Mm-hmm. We'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
My concern was the safety rejection sticker on the highway, the bottom truck, but you addressed that, so I'm satisfied with that.
We, we do have it. I actually took it a little step further and went on to the RMB to see exactly what could or couldn't be done. Court depends on what kind of sticker it is. If it's a admission, that's one thing. If it's a safety, it's another one. If it's a safety issue, if indeed the matter was fixed, and they had a, in receipt of a invoice from the people that fixed it, according to the RMB, they could have driven the truck. Now, I'm not saying they did or didn't have it, Sean, I'm just saying, I have that strictly from the RMB. So, I have the information you gave me, and we're gonna send it to the Chief and ask him to investigate it, because he knows the law better than we do.
Sure.
Okay? And we will have a written report.
Right, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Yes?
Just like to just take a minute or two. One thing I had to say to Mr. Lavash. Just to clarify, I know every time I speak, you keep saying I don't live here, but, so I've done some research, and just a really simple question. So, this is my real estate tax bill, Mr. Lavash, and it turns out I pay $1,000 a year for not even living here. And after researching your property value, you live, you don't own a home-
Okay, hold on.
What?
Hold on. Property value and so forth, you have the right to talk to Mr. Lavash about that. You do not have the right to bring it in front of the Board. What he pays in taxes is his business, but you pay in taxes-
Yes, what I'm saying is he doesn't pay any real estate taxes. So, I actually pay more than him. That's the point I'm trying to make.
I'm sorry, no, it's not allowed. We're not gonna go into it.
How is it not allowed?
You-
I, I have your policies and procedures, it's on your website, and what-
You have a right to come before the Board and ask, and have comments and concerns. We're not gonna get into something personal. That's personal between Mr. Lavash and you. It has nothing with the Board. So, if you want to address it, address it with Mr. Lavash, not the Board.
So, you're telling me what I can and cannot say at a selectmen's meeting?
I am telling you that I'm not gonna allow that, because it has nothing to do with the Board of Selectmen. It has to do with you and Mr. Lavash.
Okay.
So, it has nothing to do with the Board. If you want to take it up with Mr. Lavash, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, but not, the Board's not gonna address it. We have nothing to do with his real estate taxes or whatever, and we have nothing to do with yours.
Okay.
If you take umbrage to something that Mr. Lavash said, please take it up with Mr. Lavash. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. All right, well, then I'll just say in generic terms, I pay $1,000 a year in real estate taxes for the property that I own, and then I also pay excise tax on the vehicle that I own. The second item I'd like to discuss briefly is for, is for Dario. After the last Springtown meeting, you and I had a conversation outside in the parking lot, and I had asked you a series of very, one very simple question, and that was over Brian Corville. And I had informed you that your name was listed as a witness on the police report to Brian's criminal charges, and you had told me that you had no knowledge of why the Chief of Police had listed you on the police report, and that you had told me that you would check into that and get your name removed off the police report. So, in the meantime, I have, I actually have all of Brian Corville, Brian Corville's court records here, and what I'm a little confused is, I don't understand how court employees tell me that you negotiated, basically, Brian Corville's probation agreement.
Okay, hold on. You know what, you have the right to come before the Board, but you don't have the right to speak for Mr. Corville. If Mr. Corville wants to say something-
Well, he can't come here because you didn't want him to come here.
Excuse me? Say that again?
Mr. Corville is having issues, obviously, with the Board of Selectmen, so he is, at his own free will, doesn't wanna come here and speak to you. So, I did a public records request on my own, myself, which I have all the records, and what I don't understand is, is why Dario negotiated a deal with the Worcester District Attorney Office guy for Brian's probation, and part of the deal, the probation, was so that Brian could not run for Selectmen next year, that would keep you unopposed. So, I don't understand why court employees would tell me that information, because it makes it look like Brian Corville was put on probation, so he would not be able to run, which means you're fixing the election.
I'm not fixing anything.
In response to your first part of the question regarding the conversation we had, I had no knowledge I was on that report. I did not investigate to see if I was on that report, so I did not look to see if I was actually listed as a witness, by what you had told me.
Right, you've been listed as a witness the whole time?
That is the only knowledge I have of it, and I never did, I never contacted the Chief regarding that. So, no.
Well, that's what my question is. So, my question is, is if you told me, I, Brian and I are running for, Brian and I are running as Selectmen, candidates for Selectmen, you said to me, in my, sorry, if I'm memory conservatively correct, that it would look bad that if I was trying to get Brian in trouble for moving, and I said, "Well, why don't you approach the Chief and have your name removed as being a witness?" Because you agreed that the Chief put your name, J. Spakowski that was, put your name on this report-
I didn't agree to that. You informed me that my name was on the report, and that's where it ended.
Correct, and then all three, your names on, yes.
You didn't even tell me that either. You only told me my name was on there, and I said I wasn't aware of it.
And it has, and it also has Don Nickerson, Sue Como, it has all three names. So, the reason why I'm bringing these questions up is after talking to the court employees, when, I actually have the transcript, I'm not gonna read it to you, but I have the court transcript, when Brian went in with the magistrate, and the magistrate says, "Is Dario Notte gonna come here and testify? Is Robert Lavash gonna come and testify? Is Don Nickerson? Is Ken Frazier? Is Sue Como? Dario Notte and Deborah Waldron?" Everybody, all of you, and the police officer said yes. And it turns out then, when I went to the DA's office, then he had then told me that it was all a lie, that none of you even came in to testify. But Brian was found criminally negligent with no witnesses.
Speaking for myself, I didn't testify. I can't speak for the others.
Right, well, that's, well, that's exactly what I'm trying to figure out. So, how does, so how does Brian Corville go get criminal charges when the people listed on this piece of paper, according to the court, never showed up, and Brian was found guilty, and you, and all of your names kept coming up with the DA's office downstairs when I was talking to them, and that you people negotiated Brian's probation?
So, are you asking me to answer for the court system as to why they made the ruling they made?
What I'm asking you specifically is, did you personally negotiate with Michael Louzo, the terms and conditions of Brian's probation included removing a felony gun charge?
I don't even know that person. I never spoken to that person.
You know who Brian Corville is?
Right.
Because he was, yes, Corville.
Yes, you didn't say that. You said a different last name.
Brian Corville.
So-
So, did you negotiate in removing a criminal charge off of his records?
I negotiated in removing a criminal charge off his records with him, personally?
No, with the District Attorney's Office.
I've never spoken to District Attorney's Office regarding Brian.
Well, that's not true, because that's not what Brian Corville's court records say. The court records say that you negotiated the deal for Brian's probation.
With the District Attorney?
With the District Attorney.
Yep.
Not with the District Attorney, no, sir.
Any other?
So, he didn't. So, in other words, the court records that blamed you for all this upon.
Wait a minute, any other answer? That's done. Sit down.
Well, I'm not done yet.
You got five minutes only under comments and concerns. Spend five minutes.
Well, it hasn't been five minutes.
Yes, it has.
So, the very last thing I have to say-
Yeah, no, spend five minutes. You have five minutes only for all, everything you wanna bring before the Board, unless you're on the agenda. If you're on the agenda, you call the Selectmen's Office and state what you want to be on there and what you're gonna bring up, and then you can get on the agenda. If you're coming under comments and concerns, you only have five minutes total for everything you want to bring up.
Okay, do you have that in writing, so I can see it?
I'm telling you now, if you wanna see it, that's the status of this Board. It used to be posted on the door.
Okay.
I'm not going anymore.
Okay.
You had your five minutes. Thank you.
Well, what we can do is then put me in the agenda for every single meeting going forward, then.
Not gonna happen.
Oh, that's not gonna happen either?
No.
Why, why is that?
If you want to give us something specific, give us something specific.
I'm trying to be reasonable with you, but you say, "Oh, I don't want, you already talked for five minutes, so be quiet." And then I said, "Well, fine, I'll go on the agenda," and you say, "Oh, no, you can't be on the agenda."
Call up the Selectmen's Office.
So, you just don't want me to talk at all, is what I'm getting.
Call up the Selectmen's Office.
You're violating my rights.
Sit down!
You violate, you keep violating my rights. I don't know what it is with your people, but I guess you don't understand-
Sit down!
I guess you don't understand what open meeting law means. Maybe you should read that piece of paper.
All right, let's go to correspondence.
I'll get you a copy of the document.
Correspondence.
Can I make a comment?
Certainly.
I recently reviewed the last thirty, well, I shouldn't say the last thirty, because I'm unaware of what January might have had, but I reviewed the last thirty, of the last thirty weeks of the year for Mr. Mark Chase, his timesheets.
Wait a minute.
So, I'm curious why he's out on injured, he's being paid as injured on duty. Wouldn't, wouldn't that come, come under workers' comp if he was injured on duty?
Board can't comment on anything to do with health-related or anything else in an open meeting. It's impossible.
Okay, so, if you do a review, I'll be more than happy to give you a copy of this. There's many weeks where there weren't signatures, there weren't, there wasn't information, there wasn't overtime signed for, and what was surprising was, there were eight weeks when he was overpaid. The hours listed that he said he worked, which he signed for, then he was paid even more. So, his timesheets-
Okay.
-don't make any sense. So, I'm just curious. I mean, people in the town are curious where he is, and I just was told he was out on injury, and I thought that injury, if he was injured on duty, which the timesheet say he is, that would fall into workers' comp, and we wouldn't be paying him, because as far as I know, the town of Warren isn't self-insured, are we?
It's not under workers' comp in this particular case. We have, went to council about this, and we've also contacted insurance company. Right now, the way it is, is not on, it's, it's not workers' comp, but he is getting paid for injured on duty. That's all I can say at this time. If you have something specific that you wanna ask, my suggestion would be, you might wanna take it up with the Chief, because the Board can't comment on it with the HIPAA laws.
Well, I, I think you should, okay, so, we'll take that off the table, but I'm curious why we're, there's many clerical errors. I mean, on his timesheets when he was working, that he has signed, like, there's timesheets where he wrote down, "He worked thirty, thirty-two hours," but he was paid forty, and there's no mention of sick time or vacation time. There's twenty-four hours, they paid him thirty-two, and then they gave him eight sick. So, many, many, many of the timesheets don't even have signatures.
My suggestion would be to put what you would like to have answered, and we'll see if we can answer it, and we'll research it to find out what we can find out about it. Okay? But if you, put it in writing, exactly what your questions are, we will try to double-check for you and find out.
Okay.
Okay?
And copies. We can give copies of what you have.
Yeah.
If you have a copy, we'll take it.
I didn't bring the copies of his timesheets, but this is all pretty straightforward. Again, many times, there's signatures, but it's clearly not Chase when he was working. So, it just seems like there's nobody running herd on the town's money when it comes to payroll here, and this came right off of all of his timesheets that were turned in.
I have extreme confidence in our accountant. I'll also pass this by our accountant, because she goes through everything, and we'll see if we can get answers for you.
That would be great, thank you.
You're welcome. We go to correspondence, please.
Correspondence. Letter from the Council of Aging confirming the Board of Selectmen's findings with respect to the Senior Senate Director's probationary inquiry. They unanimously agreed that Sharon Malley's position should be extended to a permanent status. Memo from the Town Clerk advising all positions are open for the annual town election set for May 5, 2015. A complete list of positions is available in the Select, Selectmen's Office and the Clerk's Office. Response from Carrie Schmidt, Task Collector, has announced a job posting for the Assistant Task Collector position. Applications and resumes must be submitted to the Collector's Office by February 13, 2015. A job description can be found on the town's website. Hampshire Council of Government requesting a meeting regarding discussing participation in the Community Choice Aggregation Program for CMRTC. Please note that participation requires town meeting approval.
Can I see that letter, please? Unless I have it here. Oh, wait a minute, I got it. Do we wanna have the Hampshire Council sign? I don't see it won't hurt anything. Why don't we write back to her and say that we would happily, happily listen to him to find out about this program that has to do with business, residential and business electricity grids, and see if we can come up with a time that would be convenient for both of us? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, notification from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Telecommunications and Cable that a public hearing will be held on April 22, 2015 at 10:00 a.m. The purpose of the hearing is a petition of Comcast Cable Communications LLC to establish and adjust the basic services tier, programming, equipment, and installation rates for the communities in Massachusetts served by Comcast. Participation guidelines can be obtained in the Selectmen's Office.
When is this meeting?
April 22, 2015 at 10:00 a.m.
And where is it?
Oh, where is it, sorry?
I'm just, I'm just looking now. Washington Street was the- Keep that, put that date someplace that we won't figure out. Might try to get there.
Notice from Mr. Gaines Corder, resigning as a member of the Capital Planning Committee and the Veterans Council effective February 1, 2015.
Could we send a letter to Mr. Corder thanking him for his participation in both of those? It's a shame that he's leaving, and he did, he helped the town very much when it came to the two police losers. He was the one, along with another gentleman, that went out and looked to see what kind we should get. Any problem with that?
Okay, correspondence from Mr. Louise Mundell, Secretary of the Warrant Action Committee. Letter from the Warrant Action Committee regarding surplus property from various town departments. For example, at the Highway Barn, there is a fire truck, old dog catcher van, two to three unregistered vehicles, and several unused highway vehicles. The Warrant Action Committee suggests that perhaps an auction to be held to remove excess inventory and generate revenue. Warrant Action Committee requesting from Mr. Lavash a list of all remaining properties that is owned by the town in addition to inquiring when the next tax lien foreclosure auction will be scheduled.
Can you get that from Bill? I can get that from Bill, and, and I'll put it in our office, and they can give copies of that office. And we'll make it available.
From Mr. Mundell, also on the Warrant Action Committee, a letter to the Planning Board requesting consideration to create commercially zoned Route 67. I insist here, the Planning Boards should address this at their meeting on February 4. Complaint from local businesses regarding the inability to open January 1, 2015 because they did not have proper permits from the Board of Health. Although posted as open, the Board of Health office was closed. The Warrant Action Committee feels that the Board of Health did not act in a courteous and professional way in treating our business owners. In addition, a second request to have the Board of Health hold meetings at a time when residents can attend.
Could we forward that letter to the Board? They probably already have it, but to the Board of Health, and request that they take the necessary steps. Any problem with that? Bob?
Nope.
I'm there. All right. Yes?
I'd like to try to get my five minutes of comments and concerns, okay?
Go right ahead.
All right, I wanna clear something up also. With your shenanigans and everything, and putting me on probation for a year, and this is all true, okay, I'm supposed to do official business. So, with you three stooges here, is that official business right now with, for me? I just wanna know, otherwise I'll just leave.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so, I'm allowed to speak?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm gonna ask each of you, do you, are you public servants or are you dictators? Are you public servants for this town? I've been paying taxes in this town for thirty years. How dare you not let him speak or tell him what to speak, and that he can't speak because you don't wanna hear it? How dare you?
He has five minutes, just like everybody else.
Well, I'm asking you to give him my five minutes and let him speak, please.
Gary, what do you? Four minutes left. Go ahead. Go ahead. He's giving you your minutes.
All right. The other, so, basically, so, so, the whole Brian Corville thing, then finding out, and I interviewed Chief LaFleur or I interviewed the Chief of Police, is that the Chief of Police wrote Brian's police report. It wasn't even Sergeant LaFleur, and I confronted Sergeant LaFleur five times, "Why is his signature in the document that he didn't write?" And he even admitted he falsified the police report, and I even told that to the court people. I even told that to the, to the District Attorney guy. But it turns out, nobody at that court was ever told that this police department falsified a police report to convict Brian, and then the three of you got involved in negotiating his probation deal. And I'm not making that up. That's the courthouse people telling me that. State employees telling me that.
The courthouse people are wrong, because I never got involved in anything.
Well, correct, you were not involved.
You just said it was-
But the Board of Selectmen was named. So, that's what I don't understand. And what keep coming out of Michael Louzo's mouth is, was, "Well, Brian was thinking of running for Selectmen in 2015, but he can't run for Selectmen in 2015 because Dario put him on probation after that point in time." So, then I said to Michael Louzo, I says, "It's exactly what I said. The whole thing was a setup by the Board of Selectmen to, to send him, to try and send him to prison, to get into trouble, to get rid of him," and that's exactly what it was. And then the other thing I found out was the stealing of signs. The stealing of signs were done, were done by a bunch of you people, because people gave me the picture.
Stop, stop pointing your finger at me, because I didn't do anything. I didn't approve anything.
I'm pointing in general.
I have never taken a sign down by, for anybody, so that's bull.
Well, somebody took signs down-
It wasn't me.
And the only signs that were left in town property was Dario's.
Let me interrupt on that, okay?
And I have, and that person came to me and said, "Dario's signs were folded and left there." So, the whole entire thing of that election is fraud. And then here's the other thing I found out. Dario was not even legally a Selectman, because here's the documentation right here that I got from the state agency that says there was a voting fraud problem. And you never brought it to anybody's attention, because when I talked to the state rep, she said, "Oh, Mr. Glanasky put it in the newspaper and told all the residents that Dario was never legally a Selectman." And I said, "That's not even, it never made it in the newspaper." So, so I found out from Nancy that you knew all along that he was never legally appointed, because there was a problem, and Lorainer even told me that, you know, that she knew what was going on. So, why did you not tell the public? Why did you lie to everybody? And that's why I don't like being lied to, and these other people here that pay taxes.
I lied to nobody. Matter of fact, we knew there was a problem, and it was addressed through state legislature.
Well, you never addressed it. It was never on the agenda.
It was addressed.
On all the agendas, and it wasn't on one.
It was addressed, not by the Board, it was addressed by the Town Clerk's Office through the state.
Well, that's not what Nancy told me. Nancy said, "You were responsible, and it's on the town council bill," but town council said, "We need to make sure you inform the public." You got ten days, and you never did.
I'm not gonna argue with you other than the fact it was handled through the state legislature. It was a, the election itself, it was, it was an article, it was sort of it on, and it, that appeared on the handle.
Yeah, it was something that was left on the warrant. So, why did the Board of Selectmen never tell anybody in this town? Instead, and said, "I have to find out about this and go talk to Nancy," and they told me to go talk to her, and to go talk to this one, go talk to that one. Finally, I got it from Nancy, and then I called the state rep, and she explained it to me.
And it's legal, right now. It was legal, it was rectified on a legislative level.
So, why did it even happen? And if that's the case, then Dario was not legally a Selectman until the day this was signed.
Yes, he is.
Well, he is now, but he wasn't then.
All I can say is-
See, that means that everything he did is not legal, is not legal then, and you, and all of you knew it all along, because the lady told me from the State House, "Well, he shouldn't have done anything. Any vote he took does not count because he wasn't legal."
I can comment on that. I was sworn in the next day, and once I was sworn in, I was legal. I was sworn in the next day at 10 o'clock in the morning, and it was legal.
At the State House?
Right here in the Clerk's Office. I was sworn into the position.
But what I'm saying is, these records say it weren't official.
It was verified from the state that that was legal. I was sworn in.
Well, that's not what she's telling me. She's telling me that you lied to them.
Your five minutes are up. Well, Mr. Port was five minutes up, so, we're moving on.
So, basically proves that you people can't even tell the truth to your own people who have houses here and pay taxes. And that's pathetic.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to Route 67 and 19, Warren Center resurfacing and intersection improvement request for determination of applicability. And, you need a-
Sign that?
Motion for me to sign that.
Second?
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Hold on for one second. Gary, what I'm gonna turn to you at this stage. Who's got the special town meeting warrant? If you hand that to Dario as a reason, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over and tell people what it is.
Okay. All right, I'm going to read the articles for the special town meeting. This is a reminder, we're not gonna answer any questions regarding the articles tonight. We have a 6:00 informational meeting this Thursday here in this room for residents to come in, questions, comments, concerns, to bring them up to speed as to, you know, where we are with this special town meeting and why. So, I'll go through, I'll read the articles that are on here. Article one, to see if the town will go to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate and enter into a tax agreement for payment of taxes for personal property, a copy which which is available for review in the town clerk's office, in the amount of $16,500 per megawatt per year for 20 years with the Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., or its affiliates, or assigns pursuant to match general law, Chapter 59, Section 38-H, and Chapter 164, Section 1, or any other enabling authority in connection with the 1.3556 megawatt solar energy generation facility installed, or to be installed, on approximately 4.9 acres, 4.9 acres, excuse me, portion on, of the landfill located on property at 581 South Street, which property is shown on the assessor's map, six, lot 751, and described in a deed recorded with the Worcester County Registry of Deeds in Book 15656, page 227, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action necessary to appropriate and accomplish, implement, and further administer a tax agreement, or take any action relative thereto. Article two, to see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of an approximate 4.9 acre portion of the landfill located on the property at 581 South Street, which property is shown on the assessor's map, six, as lot 75.1, and described in a deed recorded in the Worcester County Registered Deeds in Book 15656, page 227, from the Board of Health or other board, or other office, or, or officer currently having custody, custody, excuse me, thereof, for the purpose for which said portion is held, which may be for landfill monitoring or related purposes, to said Board of Health or other board or officer for foregoing purposes, and also to see, and also to the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of leasing and granting easements theron, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease such portion to Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., or its affiliates, or assigns for the development theron, theron, excuse me, of the renewable energy facility for a 20-year term commencing on the date on which the facility achieves commercial operations, and to grant such access and/or utility easements on said portion as necessary or convenient to serve said facility, which leasing easements are to be on such terms and conditions, and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen determine to be the best interest of the town, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action and execute any documents necessary to appropriate, to accomplish, and the foregoing, or to take any action relative thereto.
Now, just a reminder, again, please understand, there'll be more discussion on this at 6:00 on February 5th. Everybody's invited to come.
Didn't he just say the 6th?
At 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. on the 5th.
This Thursday, which is...
I'm confused.
This Thursday at 6:00.
And what date, what number is that?
5th. This Thursday, the 5th, at 6:00.
Then anybody's, anybody's entitled to come to it. We're going to open it up, and let people ask some questions as to why it is. It'll probably last about an hour.
Okay.
Yep.
Article three, to see if the town will vote to place the following question on the official ballot to be submitted to the voters as provided in General Law, Chapter 41, Section 21 and 66. Shall the town vote to have the selectmen appoint a superintendent of streets? Yes or no, or take any action relative thereto? That's article three. Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow the sum of $13,000 in additional funds for the purpose of raising a building or structure on town-owned property known as 20 Chapel Street, parcel ID 21-4, or take any action relative thereto? And that is the four articles, sir.
Very good. Again, on the 5th at 6:00 in this, in this room, we'll go over and let people ask questions as to what the intention of those articles are, and we, like I said, it'll go for about an hour.
Make a motion this time, the warrant for the special.
All right, motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve payroll warrant number 62 in the amount of $39,037.19 dated January 26, 2015.
I'll second. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve vendor warrant number 63 in the amount of $627,722.43 dated January 29, 2015.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve payroll warrant number 64 in the amount of $36,885.7, excuse me.
Second.
Date of February 2nd, 2015.
All right, motions made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, other business? I will go to you first, Mr. Nardi.
I have no other business today. Looking forward to Thursday.
Ms. Lavash?
I'm also.
Okay, I have none either. The next meeting dates, and I'm going to give you actually three of them. As we said before, February 5th, this Thursday at 6:00 is the informational meeting on the